Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Devana.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Brings us down to special recognitions presentations, and we have one this evening, and it is the CTE Scholar. Ms. Stutler?
Yeah, we had a recognition for our CTE scholars, and she was unable to make it.
She's here.
Yeah, so we have a certificate for her. Do you want to say anything, Heidi, since you kind of?
Oh, yeah, sure, sure. Sure. This is Mia Starky, and she is the CTE Scholar, and that's a really big deal because she has actually scored on the NOCTI assessment, three different ones over 70 percent. It's very rare that that happens. We only had two CTE scholars in our county where we're at in the last five years. So I remember I was helping proctor the tests, and she took her second test, and you get your score back very quickly. And so I was like, oh, you did pretty well on that. And she goes, well, I have another one tomorrow. And I'm thinking, hmm, you're gonna have three. And then when she got that third score of above 70 percent, it's just really impressive. And she's worked really hard, and you might want to know what she's going to be doing here after graduation because she has a pretty cool plan.
I was just gonna say, look at her mask. Do you see her mask? Well, I'm gonna present Mia Starky with this certificate from Harrison County Schools, a CTE Scholar. We're glad you could make it today. Has extinguished yourself as a career in technical education triple completer and has scored at least 70 percent on three NOCTI completer exams. This earning the distinction of Harrison County Schools CTE Scholar. And so that would stay with me for a week. So congratulations. She could tell, yeah, she's got a glyval mask on. I'm assuming you're only a pioneer. That was just iron.
But I'm gonna take a year and focus on farming for now.
Oh, wow. Very nice.
What did you score in with your, was it agriculture?
My NOCTI scores?
Yes.
I believe I got an 87, and 83, and then a 74.
But what was in the?
Animal Systems, Plant Systems, and then add Business.
She's part of the program at Liberty High School.
Yeah.
They're having their banquet tonight. Teachers there. Yeah, you're back. Oh, that's the place, the FFA.
I'm getting ready to go to banquet.
Very nice. So we're glad you came this evening.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You have to go to the banquet if you go.
Those parties were great. Thank you.
I think that's Mrs. McCallie.
Ms. McCallie.
Zachary Tenen.
Yep. Thank you.
Enjoy the banquet.
Brings us down to delegations. Do we have any delegations? No delegations this evening. Superintendent's update?
You know, I didn't put a lot of things on this update because I thought we were, a lot of it involves the SRF funding. So we put that on as a separate item down lower. So we'll talk about the money, SRF funding and funding of your.
So that's it?
That's it.
I just had a couple of questions. The, how was our summer schools? And then also I wanted to find out about food for the kids who are maybe in summer schools. Is there money left? Were the federal government, were box lunches like we were doing last?
Oh, yeah, the students in the summer school programs will get a breakfast and a lunch.
Okay. I didn't know if anyone who wasn't part of the summer program.
Oh, no. Yeah, they'll be fed well for the summer school. We have, what was our, what's our number right now registered?
We're over 800 now.
Oh, okay, that's increased in the last couple of weeks. Yeah, it has. And then we're in the, we filled a lot of the positions. We're in good shape with staffing. Our high schools, we needed counselors at our sites. So we're kind of doing a different look at that because we did not have counselors. And they're going to do a career readiness piece. So we're looking at possibly professionals that have other qualifications that could do that piece. So I think we're ready to go, and teachers will have money for supplies, and we'll get it off the ground. So, yeah.
Great. Exciting.
And concludes Superintendent's update. This is down to consent items. Is there a motion to approve consent items?
Certainly.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. New business. American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Funding.
Yeah, that's kind of the hot item right now is looking at the funding that we're getting. Of course, that's what's funding our summer school. A lot of this money is funding the SOLES grant. In addition to this, it's funding all the summer school stuff for this summer. We have to put together a plan on this additional funding. It's round three. And you should have information in your packet. We have Mr. Ains here, and we have Mr. Lopez, of course, and Mrs. Tinkle to talk about how we're gonna roll that out. And I misspoke. I think Mr. Devana would ask me earlier when that was due. All payments are due. Everything has to be done and closed out. Every payment has to be made by June of 2024. So our projects, if we're looking at doing anything, we have to have it all done by then.
June of 2024.
June of 2024. And if you look at your packets, this is what was given us. It's got a yellow front on it.
I'm the one that asked that this be on here, and I have some concerns. Not that we, I just, I've worked in government all my life. I know how it works. And I just am a little bit concerned. I mean, not saying that what we're planning on doing with it doesn't need done. It's just, it's my understanding that our list of what it can be used for was pretty narrow, and it even broadened again today. The SBA has new criteria beginning today that they have been released as of today. So my only concern is, I don't want to say, I don't want to sit here and say, okay, we're gonna do all HVAC because that's the only thing they allow us to do. And yeah, the HVAC projects need done, but I don't want to, I don't want to spend the money and then we sit here six months from now and say, oh, we've already used up our money, and now they're saying that we could have taken 5 million of that and put it toward a new WI or whatever. Not saying that they will. I just don't, I just don't want to rush into it when they keep changing the criteria. And like I said, apparently you'll have new criteria tomorrow even. Because it changes. Do you have any idea what that new criteria is? No, but they've expanded what you can use it for.
My thoughts are, we have to 24 to use the money. So why, there's no need to spend it all on the front end. Can't we take and do so much each year, and then at the end we know what we have to finish? We can, you know, make a big jump at the end rather than a big jump at the beginning. Joe, you're.
You can, you can do that, but with everything we've got in the project, it's, it's gonna take a while to do it all.
Oh, I understand.
The availability of equipment right now is a lot longer than what it used to be. But we could phase it out. I'm not sure we can get everything done.
And it's two summer cycles. That's what we're, a lot of that work has to be done during the summer. You really only have next summer and the next summer.
Right.
We've got two, it's really about six months.
The thing that bothers me about phasing it is, is the cost of materials right now are exorbitant. What's it going to be six months from now or next summer? It can't get any higher. They could just as easily be less than what they. Well, they could. They could. You're absolutely right. I mean, they could go higher as well. I just, my thought process is that if we, if we go ahead and go along with this type of a plan, and, and we hold the money, and six months down the road, or a year down the road, they say you can use it for new building. You can use it for new facilities. What happens in 2024 when we don't, if we don't have all the money for a new WI, and they take that $5 million back, and then we have nothing? I don't think that ever happened. We could then quickly spend it if that's the case.
It has to be expended. I mean.
I mean, like, for instance, do we have, and I haven't seen all of the plans, but do we have, did we move anything? Because we could technically on our core project, the HVAC can come out with this money and then take the money that we were putting into that and put it back in the general fund. Is that being done?
My experience with the federal government and free money is use it ASAP.
Right.
Because the federal treasury can come in at any time and say, okay, it's kind of like the 18th story. You know, how much do you have left? And if you say you have 50, well, you mustn't own either day. So then the next round, they're only gonna give us five. And, and they can't take the money back, the federal treasury. So my opinion is.
At the end, they get, they get back.
They could take it anytime they want.
Well, how many, how many millions?
Especially on these emergency.
26 million dollars. So if you spend.
But a portion of that is for learning loss.
Right, right. This is just the total amount.
So if you spend 10.
About 20 million for facilities.
You know, say you spend five to seven or whatever first, and then 10 or whatever the second, and then finish up on the third, third year with what's left, complete whatever projects, you know, and it gives you a better handle.
That's up to you. If I was going, I would, I would get it started and try to do it all.
Yeah.
I'm not saying don't do it all, but I'm just saying doing it a little bit. So at the end, if they say that you could use five million, six million, whatever, and.
And I'm not saying delay it for two years. I'm saying delay it for a month or two until we get all of the direction.
Right.
That's my, so. When are you having, are you having a meeting in the near future with the state to tell us what to do?
And I actually took the very last date possible. We have to present our plan to the state. I took the very last date. They were gonna get rich for Conference Center, and I took July 20. That is the last date to present our plan and what we're doing. So we have to already identify the projects that we're doing, what we're doing for learning loss. And I have to present July the 20th at noon is the date they gave me. And they, there were dates as early as June 3rd.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Something changed today.
So I just automatically put in for that date and got it.
And that's fine to be the last. That's just my thing is, I just hate to rush in. We do this even though the projects have been done, and then we find out that, that some of this money could have been used for something that we needed even more.
Well, like for instance, air purification seems to be a big, a big thing, okay? So we look into getting air purification into these schools. That's gonna take a chunk of money, okay? Maybe that's one of the top things or priorities now, you know, air purification. Then you spend some of this money doing all that, and then use some on your HVAC and what have you. Then next year, we got more HVAC and whatever, or, and I say next year. It can be six months down the road. It could be a year down the road, but, you know, surely.
The air, the air purification is included in this project. As far as the deionization units, it's included in this. Now, what's changed, I mean, this whole thing when it first started was very strict.
Yeah.
I mean, it was basically deionization only, but then it's expanded everything that causes infiltration into a facility, which could include roofs, include windows, include doors.
Okay.
I mean, for instance. If the SBA, and like Gary just said, you know, we don't know right now if we could use this money towards the HVAC equipment at Gore Elementary.
I was told you, I found that out.
See, I didn't know that.
Yeah, that we can take the, take this money to plant that and take the other and put back into our general fund.
Right.
I was, I asked that question specifically. My other question is too, and I understand where we're changing and replacing and all that. But, you know, when you have this, even if we go forward with this, when we look at, we've got a pile of money that we didn't have before, why wouldn't we look at finally putting air conditioning in the Robert C. Burton Gym or the Liberty Gym? I mean, to me, this is, this is what you call found money. The other stuff, yeah, we have to do eventually, but you could make a bigger impact by finally getting some HVAC into this.
That's in this project too.
Yeah.
Air conditioning.
AC upgrades.
Not only those gyms you mentioned, but other gyms also.
But is, because there is none in, there's no air conditioning in Robert C. Burton. Is that in this?
They got them moved. They said this won't be the trash year. I don't think they've ever opened that.
Have HVAC. These were all items out of CEFP that we identified as needs.
Yes.
Everything in here was in our 10-year plan.
When we talked about personnel, like we're always pointing to so much.
Yeah.
That money was in round two. It's already there.
Okay.
The salaries are, are covered.
I mean, I, I think, I like this. I think if we can hold off for just a few more weeks to find out.
Because like I said, today something happens where they release the new rules, which we don't even have yet. So I just don't want to move too quickly and.
Could you hold off until the end of June to find out if there's something else, and then we go forward with this? I mean, I like this thing. I have, I have no problems with it. I'm just wanting to see if there would be something else.
And also look, if we can pull some of that, our general fund money out of the Gore Project and then use this. I was told specifically by the SBA. What's your, what's your meeting going to entail on July 20?
Is this just the whole list, everything?
Yeah, that's from, that's from the CEFP.
But it's not the priority.
No, not really. Not one, two, three priorities.
So if you would be able to, would you be able to go back and say?
And they'll give you direction at this point?
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
I mean, they're either gonna approve it or not.
Maybe before you.
But here's my theory on, here's my theory on the gyms and taking care of that.
Right.
Yeah, because someone may say, oh, yeah, that would take care of gyms. I don't know any. You know, this is called, this is emergency funds from COVID.
Yes.
And I think when you're spending it for air conditioning and gymnasiums, it's more along that line because those places need to function as evacuation centers. They need to function. And let's say you had a catastrophe. We ought to be able to put hots in our gyms, but you can't in July, middle of July when it's 400 degrees out there. So I think that's a proper use to be able to do those gymnasiums because those are gathering places. That's, that's why I'm more concerned. If, you know, if I was to say today, okay, we're gonna go ahead and call HVAC, that's where I would go, want to go first, is to make sure that our gyms have air conditioning.
That's why I ask if could he prioritize.
Yeah.
You know, and then, then we know a total amount of money we need to, because it's already wondering how much it's going.
Well, I think that was going to be the next step. We put everything in that we felt from CEFP, which is more than the money will pay for.
Yeah.
And then prioritize it from there when we see what kind of costs were coming in on these. Because we don't know until that's fit out of the project.
And Department of Education also kind of, they're gonna have their approval on all this. They haven't, they haven't give us that full approval yet.
Does it, would, does it bother you if we wait till the end of the month to approve this? Does that mess up any, anything you have to do?
Well, I have to put my plan out for 30-day comment before I present to the board. So on July 20. So we are on a, like.
Okay.
I mean, it might, as far as putting it out for bid, I guess you could, I, I just have to.
We don't have to put it out for bid. We just have to give them what we want to be doing with the money.
I like that priority in this first, and then.
So that's our, our bid, I mean, we're just, we're just saying we're going to do X, Y, and Z at that July meeting.
Then you have a better idea of what to put in your, in your speech to the powers that be.
Ms. Stutler?
Yes.
If I could just interject, I know some of those projects that need to be completed, we're gonna have to take a look at, because we're finding out with more project, what projects we can do while there are students in the building. And so that, I think, has a little bit to do with when, when we can get things accomplished. Joe, now roofs, I think you might be able to do those when school's in session. Some of the HVAC work perhaps in the evenings. And then there's some that maybe they can. So as far as priority and then the window of when we would be able to get the work completed. But the first thing we need to do is we need an architect or architects to take a look at, you know, just the procurement process.
Worse still, it really awaits from even getting it. I mean, getting the projects out then.
Yeah, they're not gonna be out.
It's always not worth the bid.
Yeah, because I think whoever we pick as the engineer architect will also help guide us to prioritize maybe some of them because they may have a better idea once they look at them, what's more feasible and what's not.
And I'm, and I'm good with the five feeder areas. That way everyone gets something, and you can spread the work out to other company, you know, to whatever companies. I'm okay with that. I have a little bit of a concern with that if you have five projects going at the same time, and you don't have one person overseeing it, things can go wrong over here, and they can go over by a million, and then you have to take it from this project over here. So you kind of have to have someone on top.
And we discussed that.
I'm gonna say something.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying something here. Why are we talking about architects and?
You have to have an architect.
It's a requirement.
An architect?
You have to hire an architect. An engineering firm, an A and E firm to do any of the projects. And during the pre-bid, we, we have seven companies interested. There they are.
You can't just throw an HVAC on, on a roof without getting approval.
It has to be designed.
An architect. Okay.
Architect and engineer. We can't go in there.
Before we built Johnson, we did tours at the schools, and one of the things, I think, I can't remember who it was, Shepard, but they had pushed solar panels on the roofs, which, which increases the life of the roofs, but also empowers the school. Is that something that we could do with some of this money, which would help out with alleviating the cost? But you got all those flat roofs. It would be great for solar panels. And like you're talking about free money, but it would go right back into that school to save money on everything else, like your HVAC.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of our over schools are part of retrofit just that way.
I don't.
You may be able to do it at Johnson, like they talked about.
I think that calls under more under energy savings than that it would not be a priority. Like an energy savings project, it's more air quality.
Right. I was thinking about the roof.
Oh, like the.
So we've put it on the roof over here. Save the wear and tear on the roof because it'd be blocking. I just, you're.
Yeah, that's not something that was ever.
I don't know. It's the way he's ever discussed that before, so I don't know.
So when people get approved tonight, there's a general concept so that we.
Well, just an idea, what direction do you want to go? I mean, we've got this money. I have to put a plan together. We definitely have to get started on it. I think we're gonna run into either supply issues and contractor issues if we wait.
Well, is this a, does someone need to make a motion?
No, no, there's no action. It's just a discussion of what we're looking at. This actually was the pre-bid. This was the project. And like I said, it's all taken out of CEFP. There are all things that need to be done. It's just a matter.
And I mean, the, the CEFP just saves us money in the long run. It saves us a lot of money. And I understand the rush also because you don't know the unknown, but, I mean, the other flip side of that too is if everyone's doing it at the exact same time, you have 55 counties doing it. There's only so many contractors anyway. So it's not that you may get to it first. You may be better off after they finish the first wave of the, the projects that they're looking for because, right, I mean, right now, if 55 counties are bidding all these projects, then it's a, it's their market. It's not ours because they can, they can bid on it, and they can choose to, and they can choose not to, and.
Yeah, I think one of our concerns was we wanted to be quick out of the gates to secure the A and E firm, and then they could kind of guide us how quickly to pull the trigger on the actual doing of the project. But we were concerned if we didn't secure an A and E firm early, they would be so tied up that then we would be delaying even getting the person to start the project. And that's what these.
That's what these are, yes.
Those are just the proposals.
It's just their fee and what they can, their service.
Right.
So when do we vote on those or do it?
Well, that's, that's another question. You, are you wanting to pick us up or the A and E firm? Or do you wanna?
I would, I would prefer to let you and Jimmy do that and Joe, and then you bring us a recommendation. That would be my preference.
Yeah. Because, you know, you got five people, and we may all have a different opinion. You, three working together, you know, about this.
And there technically could be an A and E firm that oversees the project, and you could have other A and E firms going into the projects, correct?
I think that could be done. You know, we've never done anything this large with this many, at this many schools at the same time.
Because we already come.
Maybe perhaps we can find, get some clarification from that.
Yeah.
Or maybe school building or even.
They basically have an architect of record and then.
You just have to be real careful because there's a lot of paperwork, and as you know, a lot of rules with federal contracts.
Right.
With the rules that you hear about the high rate.
Yeah, which happens in oversight from that point person might help coordinate that as a trial stretch. It could.
Yeah, because we need to talk to that, the, the part of the works for this to kind of oversee the whole thing or.
Yeah, I think you have to have someone to pull cases together. All right. That's, I mean, that gets the ball rolling. That's all I want. I just want to make sure we were.
Just to keep you up to date on what we're looking at, the project.
Did this?
A lot.
It's a lot too.
But she just.
But. Okay, last time we did that, I guess.
One more board member, Black Hall, Christina will be, whoever you want to appoint.
Who? I can, I mean, I can do it. Who? Whoever board wants to be on the, you did it last time.
I did it last time.
On the committee for selecting our, our other, other accounting firm? Anyone have? We'll have to do our accounting firm selection again. I'll always point one board member. Frankie did it last time.
I did it last time, three years ago.
There's like a prescribed, the state gives you.
The board members for the.
I mean, it's pretty tough.
If someone wants to do it, then let me know.
You just need to.
Not me. I keep them in a lot of money.
Yeah. He lost money tonight. All right, we will move down to no old business. What about the broadband and connect? Is that, was that part of, was that something separate?
This is, individuals have to do that. This was just information that was sent out to the families that they can get $50 of us on the dinner that it's available, but they have to reach out. So we supply this to family so that they take care of it.
It was supposed to be.
We don't have to.
It's supposed to be an easy process where they get it, and now you have to go asking for it, and.
Yeah.
No policy updates? This is down to personnel matters?
Yes, sir.
And we do have personnel matters. Is there a motion? Mr. Devana, you need to recuse yourself.
For what?
Personnel.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know we was there. I'm sorry. I was telling, I don't even story. Yes, I need to recuse myself. I have two people working the summer program, Lauren Ho and Amanda Ferris who are working summer school.
Okay, is there a motion?
I made a motion to approve noting Mr. Coke's recusals.
Moved, is there a second?
On second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board member comments. Mr. Donbree.
I have nothing.
Ms. Messenger?
Yes, I would like to bring up what we were discussing in the beginning. If this is, if this is what I go to appropriate time about these graduations. And I do want to make note that this isn't the first time I'm bringing it up because I brought it up four years ago as well. That there are rules, and I understand that, but I do believe, like Doug said, that something has to happen where there's a uniform. And when children, students, young adults are told they aren't even gonna walk in graduation because of missing a credit or something like that, I think all that needs to be through the superintendent. I think you should have the final say on what ends up being the finale of someone's educational career in Harrison County. And I don't understand the need to make it negative under such little circumstances, and some that are outright wrong, like representing your school and families and stuff. There, there's a point where this has to be reevaluated, in my opinion. And kids that have spent 12, 13 years doing everything they could for the school and the community get ostracized. And it's just not right. Just not. And I think something, and we should get together, we should do something different or come up with a plan or a kid on, but I think it needs to go through our office. Once again, I don't think every school, of course, they can have their own little traditions and stuff, but there has to be a standard that this is a celebration and is not a punishment when you graduate. And that is how it ends up for a lot of our students. And principals need to know how to pick their battles, and that shouldn't be one of them.
It should not be lauded over someone's head.
Yeah.
I think, I think this year, all years, there should have, should have.
Should have been some leeway.
Mr. Hahn?
Say that was mine.
Mr. Hahn?
No, no comments.
Mr. Devana?
One thing I would like to say, I know we are in a position within the county where we're having difficulty with, with subs and substitute teachers. And I wanted to know if there was a possibility for us to do some kind of drive, some kind of hiring drive, and if it's a possibility, if we could do. and if it's a possibility, if we could do something like we did with bus drivers, where we could offer some type of a stipend for subs to sign on so that we can get subs. I, I don't know if that's legal, if it's possible, or if it's something that we should be considering. But I know that we're, we're in a difficult situation with subs. And I want to see if there's something we can do to alleviate some of that process to getting them on and getting them and bringing, making them attractive.
I'm really not sure yet.
You can't pay any kind of, none of that you can do. Now, maybe if you could find something that you could reimburse them, because that's kind of how we fly away with the bus or everything. It's not like a signing bonus. We'll pay them back for something that they have to do. I just think they're not, we just don't have them as available.
No, I know.
Retired teachers are removing themselves from the sub list. And I, you know, counties are facing this lots of places.
Yeah.
We've had a lot of conversations about it. We've even this year put our county office staff that have certifications on a rotation and we're calling them to go and fill classrooms, usually on a weekly basis. This last month, the school's been difficult. It was difficult during the vaccine times because we had a lot out. And now I think we've had some long-term subs. A lot of our retired teachers have decided next year, they just, I think they've been off this year. They discovered that they can-
They can still enjoy their time.
Yeah, so I've had conversations with some of them. Stay on the list and all they get.
And I think quite honestly, it's the chickens come over. We beat up teachers over the last five, six years and we ran them out of competition.
I just wondered if there's something that we can do.
Like an incentive.
Yeah, incentive wise to get subs.
I mean, we could, um-
How about this?
I mean, there are the West Virginia Learn subs that are the daily subs or they can get the 30-day. I mean, we're trying to seek them out, but a lot of times they don't stay either. They'll work and then take another job somewhere.
I have a good suggestion on this because I'm kind of sitting in that place and, you know, my daughter, I wanted her to apply. Is there, can we not have like a fair, like anybody that's interested in being a sub? But we have people that can walk them through everything they have to do. Have the papers there they have to fill out, where they have to get fingerprinted. Everything just to make it easier instead of, here, this is what you, this is what you have to do calls when you're done.
Hiring drive.
Yeah, like a substitute hiring drive like you're talking about. But in the format, like when, I remember like when the, when the kids were in high school and they had the, when you sign up for your, your federal grants and stuff. All the parents went in, they were, and you know, everyone was real excited. But if you have like a fair like that where it is simplified, that they can fill out the paperwork, do their fingerprints, if there's any questions, you know, bring the transcripts in, you know, I just really think like a-
I think that won't work. I mean, because that's-
The West Virginia Learn stuff.
But even right, there may be, there may be people who used to teach, they, they're raising their kids and now they could probably get back in. But that may be too much trouble to come up there. And there's the mall and there's a booth there and hey, you know, they may-
Well, yeah, those are, if they've already got a teaching license and it's not expired. See, a lot of them will let their license-
But it may be the case where I do that and I don't feel like going up there and doing that. But it doesn't hurt. If you set up a, if you set up a table at the mall for a couple of weeks, I guarantee you'd probably get 10 to 20.
But I will tell you, our new teachers, we had multiple ones that just graduated. They've all gotten jobs. They're going right out into positions. We had two math positions. We had a, a math positions, two science positions, title positions. And we are doing some different things with like, we're allowing titles to work on getting their certification. So we have, this last post day, we were really pleased with, but it will be the matter of the-
And even, even what you just said, there's people that have degrees out there now that can be rolled, like you're saying. I'm on the board and like, I don't even know if they are. And like I said, I have my daughter there and I'm always trying to find out like-
Well, that's just the change.
I, I don't know what she needs to do. I go to the West Virginia side. We need to have a more direction where somebody can learn their Chinese clips and say, what can this, what can I do with this?
Yeah. The West Virginia Learns is a pretty streamlined thing if you have a degree. The new guidelines, it's coming out July 1, they have yet to tell us what all you need. I know there, there has to be a degree and you have to pass the practicing content. But there's going to be another step and then have yet to tell us at the certification office. And I believe Howard will speak on that.
Well, I will have to-
But that's going to be an avenue if you have a bachelor's degree, then you can pass content and easily, quick.
I pass all my content, all my programs and have an education degree, but I am not certified in the state of West Virginia.
Yeah.
So be sure.
It would be entered in.
Under the new guideline.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, I don't think it's out there. Yeah, I don't think it's out there.
Yeah.
We, we ran through the certification office. We just talked to them last week. They have yet to determine what that's going to look like.
I had the 11, but I forgot about the-
But that's going to be a good, it'll be, I mean-
60, 50.
All right, anything else?
No.
Mr. Hutter?
Good luck.
Let's go finish. Just to give everyone an update, Thursday at 4 o'clock at the Bridge.
Yes, sir.
We'll see a tour since-
Is there a way to change it then?
I doubt you can't come any earlier.
Could you come during your lunch break?
No, I could, I could, earlier is better.
Yeah, but we need to make sure they're even open.
Well, I mean, I'll have to see if they-
Yeah.
If they could change it to noon, then we could do it at noon.
Yeah, I could check it out.
Yeah. If they could do it, we do it at noon. Otherwise, it's 4 o'clock since you've already set it up. Also, next, remember next Thursday, correct?
This point there.
Yeah, that's for there. But then next Thursday, we have that statewide or the regional meeting. We always have the Bridgeport Conference.